Get your call real call, please.
Here.
Ms. Rainey.
Here.
Mr. Butler.
Present.
Mr. Callie.
Here.
Mr. Jenkins.
Present.
Mr. McDonald.
Present.
Ms. Qualls. Ms. Shulist.
Here.
Ms. Senyard.
Here.
Thank you. Good job. Join me for opening prayer and pledge. Lord, we are meeting today to take matters of business, got our hearts and our minds and the spirits of fairness, right thought and speech, impart your supreme wisdom upon our activities so that our affairs may reach successful conclusion. Thank you for being our source of guidance today. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, guys. We'll go to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Rainey Anderson?
Yes, sir.
Any discussion? Ms. Johnson?
Ms. Rainey?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Butler?
Aye.
Mr. Callie?
Aye.
Mr. McDonald?
Aye.
Mr. Jenkins?
Aye.
Ms. Shulist?
Aye.
Ms. Senyard?
Aye.
Thank you. Citizens comments?
There are none tonight.
Thank you. Approval of minutes from the February ninth, twenty twenty-one regular meeting. Make a motion to approve.
Back up.
Callie, Rainey, any discussion? Ms. Johnson?
Mr. Callie? Ms. Rainey?
Aye.
Ms. Senyard?
Aye.
Ms. Shulist?
Aye.
Mr. Jenkins?
Aye.
Mr. McDonald?
Aye.
Ms... ...Anderson?
Ah.
Mr. Butler.
The hard name to pronounce.
All right, we'll go to new business. Item one, PC resolution PC thirteen dash twenty-one. Site plan, flats at Ferneville Springs, fourteen multifamily units on one point one seven acres. Map forty-two parcel sixty-three applicant SM Commercial LLC. May I have Ms. Shulist read the staff comments for me, please?
First staff comment, two variances have been requested for the project, including variance number one, request to be exempt from the requirement to itemize and protect slash replace trees in accordance with section two dash one oh three of the design review manual. Variance two, request to install a fo- a four-foot perimeter fence in lieu of the requirement in section two dash one oh six of the design review manual to install a six-foot perimeter fence for transitional screening. Uh, second comment, the applicant shall provide legal documentation between the development parcel, lot two of map forty-two parcel sixty-three and adjacent parcel lot one of map forty-two parcel sixty-three to accept the future increase in post-project stormwater and shared maintenance responsibility of the stormwater system and detention. This agreement shall be recorded with the county and active prior to issuing a grading permit. Comment three, incorporate updated sheets C six site details and C two site and utility plan into construction drawing set within IDT system prior to pre-construction meeting. Comment four, address text conflicts and remove unnecessary callouts where indicated in plans prior to pre-construction meeting. Item five, provide updated EPSC drawings to TDEC for updates to the construction general permit and obtain approval from TDEC prior to issuing grading permit. Item six, plan set to be approved by all utility providers prior to pre-construction meeting. Action by the planning commission, motion to approve or disapprove of PC resolution PC one three two one.
Thank you very much. Good evening.
Good evening. Uh, most of y'all may recall, everybody, I think, except for two, was on this board when this was originally approved. So we're, we're really just trying to get a reapproval of an expired, expired approval.
Were the variances part of the previous approval?
The variance was not even asked at the approval, previous approval. We wasn't asked for a tree density, uh, Trent, the engineer here. We have done, went out and done the tree count since. Uh, and of course, if you look at our site plan, we're planting a bunch of trees around the perimeter of the property to buffer it from the adjoining residential properties. And the, uh...
Tree density worksheet, we completed, I just handed it to Kevin, excuse me. And actually over...
Mr. Butler?
Yes, sir.
Just for purposes of where we are, could, could we at least get the petitioners to identify themselves for the record so we can know who's making the, the comments and then follow up just appropriately, not cut anyone off, but we just need to be...
If you could, please state your names.
I'm Trent Smith, engineer with Southern Consulting.
Tim Mangram with SM Commercial.
Thank you, guys.
So what are the trees that are currently on the, what is the tree inventory look like? Why have you asked for the variance?
Well, the, this was, like I said, this was previously approved. Um, the trees were there then. We wouldn't ask for a tree density worksheet then. Uh, that was actually sort of sprung on us last minute. Uh, when we actually got a meeting with Mike and Kevin, we had to get it turned around the same day. We had to get stuff turned back in the same day. We didn't, there was no way to get the surveyors to go out, pinpoint every tree and get it done prior to. So they, uh, they just told us we'd get it prior to the meeting. We would try to get through that, but according to the tree density worksheet there, we're, we're planting back way more trees than, than it would require by the tree density worksheet.
So therefore, you're never, you're not technically asking for this variance once we verify the calculations?
Effectively, yes.
It's a point of clarification, just so we're, we're, everyone, we had a chance to review this and specific to, um, item one A of, of the two variances. Having reviewed... I'll wait. Having reviewed the ordinance and gone through, um, the review of that, I don't believe because of the existence, the way the ordinance is, that, that this ordinance is a municipal code ordinance as it relates to the trees and not simply in the subdivision regulations as an item eligible for a variance. So specific to item one A, I don't believe that the planning commission has the legislative authority to grant the variance on item one A. Item one A as it relates to the tree ordinance is adopted by, is in municipal code, and I don't believe that there is, I don't believe that there's an opportunity to have that variance. Specific to the subdivision regulations, the, um, this section in the design review manual and in the subdivision regulations state that the tree ordinance should be managed by the codes and planning department outside from that. So given that, I don't believe that there's an opportunity to grant a variance at the planning commission level for item one A.
So as a matter of practice then, or procedure, what can we do here? Can we even send a positive motion for approval to the board of commissioners with this variance on the, um, item?
I don't believe so, sir. I don't believe there's, I don't believe this is a matter that would, that will be able to be, um, waived. And I don't believe that the board of commissioners would have the authority to grant the variance either.
Okay.
Since similar to, I don't believe the board of commissioners will be able to grant a variance for someone who was caught speeding.
Okay.
Speeding is what it is, and this variance is separate outside from that. So, um, in that light, I don't, I don't think we could grant the variance on one A.
So as a matter of procedure, um, they would first need to go to the, the tree board, is that correct? What, who is the, who is the person that would grant a variance?
I, I don't believe there's, I don't believe this is variance eligible.
Okay.
Sir.
Let, let me ask one simple question. If our tree density worksheet is correct, we don't need a variance. So is there any way we can vote on this to approve or disapprove tonight contingent on this worksheet being correct?
My suggestion would just be simply not consider item one A at all.
So just remove that.
So it doesn't hold for two? What about two?
So what's the story behind variance two?
One A is just a variance. Yeah.
So variance one B is, is a variance to, in lieu of the required six-foot perimeter fence, use a four-foot tall perimeter fence with landscaping. So it, the four-foot fence would be augmented with additional landscaping rather than having a six-foot tall fence.
Doesn't it come out of the same, um, design review manual as the previous? So the same thing holds true? You can't, we can't do anything about it?
No, the, the difference in that would be that there's no municipal code as it relates to, to fence height in the city's municipal code, under its enforceable codes, title thirteen of the city's municipal code. So the fence height is going to be a subdivision regulation that would be available for variance by the planning commission, but the municipal code section specific to the tree bank and the tree variance would not be eligible.
And it was previously approved with that four-foot fence as well. We just feel like a four-foot fence opposed to a six-foot privacy fence is, which is what the six-foot typically alludes to, over time, the six-foot privacy fence is just not going to maintain well, it's not going to hold up well. Uh, this four-foot fence, we think in a residential setting, it looks more residential than a, a big tall privacy fence.
Mr. Mangram?
If anybody's looked at the new six-foot privacy fence that's been put up at the newest apartments on Highway one hundred, it's not very appealing, so.
But aren't most of the other fences on your properties over there six-foot?
Say that again, sorry.
Most of your other properties over in that same little quadrant, aren't they six-foot fences?
There's no fences there.
I think some personal, like, people have put up their own, I guess. Seems like they're tall six-foot fences.
No, not, not adjacent to this. Now, there may be some in some neighborhoods scattered out, uh, somewhere else where people, the homeowners have done it by themselves.
You're, you're designing for your four-foot fence, you're saying perimeter fence, uh, so is that like a four rail horse fence or is that?
Yes. Yes, there's some details in the submittal that shows a typical of what that fence would look like.
All right.
So, Mr. Mangram, as you know, we, we are representatives of our ordinances and regulations. Um, the reason why we have a design review manual is so that everything looks consistent across the board when things get built in Fairview. If you may be right, your subjective opinion is that a four-foot horse style farm fence is prettier than a privacy fence. I believe that in my own home. I, I don't like privacy fences. I think they're ugly. Um, but alas, that's what's in our design review manual. Unless there is a really good reason for me to, um, have you do a four-foot fence as opposed to what's in our design review manual, I, I don't see why I should allow that variance.
Well, that's, that's your opinion. Like I said, we're just asking because we feel like this is, and, and for safety reasons, I feel like for safety reasons as well. You know, if the, if the police are called out there for any reason, they can't see over a six-foot fence either. So I, I'm just not a fan. I'm like you, I'm not a fan of privacy fence, and I think it could be a security issue.
Mr. Blackburn, are there any engineering pros or cons to having one versus the other? What are we looking at here?
There, there are pros and cons to, to just about, like you said, a, a safety thing, if you're getting in and out of there, maintenance thing. Standard is there, and the ability for the planning commission to take those things into consideration is there. Matter of your, your all's opinion of whether that is a, an acceptable compromise between six and, six-foot fence versus four with some vegetated, some nice vegetation, so.
I think if you wanted to maintain nature, that's going with a four-foot with shrubbery and plantings would be better for that. That, and I think homeowners would like that, at least the homeowner would like that better.
Mr. Mangram, who are your neighbors on the sides?
Uh, the one to the north is, um, the Pinkerdens, Mike Pinkerton and Karen, that's his wife's name, sorry. The one to the south, I'd, I'm not sure. They've been there about two and a half years. But I, I don't know who they are.
No motion. Is there any other questions? But the, the other staff comments are things that can be assessed through the IDT approval process.
Yeah, those are just little cleanup things, nothing...
So the question would be, is it appropriate if it was contingent on the satisfaction of the staff? Or does it need to be deferred to where you have time to review it and, and answer?
Our, our consideration is items two, three, four, five, and six are appropriate for consideration. Item one A would not be, so that would only leave by interpretation the variance of item, uh, one B.
Do we need motions on the variances first or with all the?
I'm sure Mr. Potter could answer this question, but I believe you could do it in one motion.
Okay.
But if we're saying not to vote on, uh, vote on one A tonight, we probably would just need to give some feedback on one B, um, for future consideration, and then A could be reviewed, um, from the staff's standpoint.
Yes, our suggestion is to, to approve items two through six. And we, we would suggest that that be done tonight. Item one A not be considered tonight or, or not be approved. And then item one B be considered by, by the board as to whether or not they decide that'd be favorable or, or not, or the planning commission.
So if we moved, removed one A and passed it, does that still satisfy where it has to meet that, or do we need to defer it? Okay. So you could vote on it tonight.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay, you're, you've lost me. So one A, we don't have the authority to consider, so it just needs to come out of our...
Right.
It just needs to come off completely.
Right.
One B, we have the authority to allow.
That is correct.
And we can vote on that tonight, or does that need to be deferred for staff review? And then item two through six, we're good to go on.
Yes.
Anyone like to make a motion?
Yes, sir. I'd like to make a motion that we approve, uh, omitting, uh, one A and approve with all other, uh, recommendations from our staff. And go, and go forward.
Second.
Just to clarify, there's a motion for approval striking one A, so to not approve of variance one A, approving of variance one B, and letting staff resolve the other two through six.
Correct.
Does it, does that satisfy you, Mr. Potter?
Second, that's procedurally fine.
Okay. So we have a first, Mr. Anderson. We have a second, Mayor Rainey. Any additional discussion or questions?
Yeah, for, for me, if, if we were to take this action and approve it with, uh, the second variance, then we need to then revisit the design review manual and see if we want to continue using six-foot fences in the design review manual, or do we want to go ahead and change that to something different, like the four-foot fence?
I agree. Revisit and see if we think that more landscaping is a satisfactory...
Yeah.
Absolutely. Any additional discussion or questions? Ms. Johnson?
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Ms. Rainey?
Aye.
Mr. Callie?
Aye.
Mr. McDonald?
Aye.
Mr. Jenkins?
No.
Ms. Shulist?
Aye.
Ms. Senyard?
Aye.
And Mr. Butler?
Aye.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you, guys. Item two, PC resolution PC fourteen dash twenty-one. Site plan twenty-one thirty-five Fairview Boulevard, one point eight six acres, map forty-two parcel one twenty-six. Property owner Harold Cry. Ms. Shulist, if you could please staff comment for me, please.
Got it. Staff comment one, provide written notification from T-DOT authorizing the construction entrance being allowed onto Highway one hundred prior to pre-construction meeting. Staff comment two, maintenance bond shall be provided on all landscaping until such time as irrigation installation. Staff comment three, plan set to be approved by all utility providers prior to pre-construction meeting. Action by the planning commission, motion to approve or disapprove of PC resolution PC one four two one.
Thank you. If you could, please state your name, sir.
Eric Colson with Anderson Delcamps. Um, and the plan right now is just to masquerade the site, and as far as the T-DOT, I met with T-DOT on the twenty-third to kind of discuss the access. Since it's, we're using that existing drive, they're okay with it. It's asphalt outside the right-of-way. We'll continue the construction entrance, uh, past the asphalt outside the right-of-way. Uh, I'm working on getting an official letter from them right now.
Thank you, sir. Any additional questions?
There was no, um, there was nothing on the site plan as to what's going there. Do you know yet?
There's no plans to develop it right now. What the developer wants to do is just masquerade the site, bring some material in, kind of, because it's a little bit of a, kind of a low point, so he wants to grade the lots up, kind of help sell them, and then, um, we'll submit plans just in the future whenever we know what's going in.
Any additional discussion or questions? Anyone like to make a motion?
Is there an expected timeframe for how long the lot will sit there before it's developed?
Nothing more, no.
And after the lot is graded, it will have to be ceded, strawed, maintained?
Yeah.
Yeah, they, they'll have a, a T-DOT permit in place that they will, uh, any kind of, you know, traffic control on one hundred that T-DOT will require. That's why their first comment is there about access, because there's already a driveway cut that's, that's paved right there, that they would use as their construction entrance to masquerade the site. And that the onsite stormwater drainage would be temporary until such time that it gets developed, and then it would go to a more permanent basis.
Thank you, sir. Any more questions or anyone like to make a motion?
I'd like to go ahead and make a positive motion to the board of commissioners.
Motion for approval. Jenkins, Callie. Any additional questions or discussion? Ms. Johnson?
Mr. Jenkins?
Aye.
Mr. Callie? Ms. Rainey?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. McDonald?
Aye.
Ms. Shulist?
Aye.
Ms. Senyard?
Aye.
Mr. Butler?
Aye.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Item three, PC resolution fifteen twenty-one. Site plan Aidenwood subdivision, face two, thirty-five building lots on thirty-one point four acres. Map zero forty-six B parcels one through twenty, eleven point zero three. Property owners Brad Fischel. Ms. Shulist, if you could read staff comments for me, please.
Number one, the maximum allowable spread for a curb and gutter system is six feet as stated in section four dash one one three point two oh seven Design Storms of the Fairview subdivision regulations. The applicant is requesting a variance to allow spreads that exceed six feet for noted stormwater inlets. Staff comment two, plan set to be approved by all utility providers prior to pre-construction meeting. Action by the planning commission, motion to approve or disapprove of PC resolution PC one five two one.
Thank you.
Mr. Blackburn, do you mind educating us on, um, storm and gutter spreads and what they are and why they're important?
Sure. Okay, so gutter spread in our standard, um, it's measured from the face of the vertical part of the curb, and that's curb with a B, not with a V. So it's the distance that water would be, would extend to from that point into the road in the twenty-five-year storm. So, and it's based on the upstream inlet. So whenever water's flowing in, you know, the inlet gets inundated, and then it's a measure of how far out from the face of curb that water would extend. And typically, the six-foot is, it, it comes from not wanting to inundate more than half of a lane with water. Because if you put it on both sides, then you get six foot on this side, six foot on this side, and you got a twenty-four-foot road, you've only got a twelve-foot lane in the middle with no water. So that's, then, that's the reason that the standard is there. There are conditions where you may have more space to get around, things like that, but that's the way the standard is worded, and that's what intent of that requirement would be.
So within the plans, it looks like inlets, I'm, I'm just reading word for word here, so inlets number six, seven, and eighteen are all in a cul-de-sac with spread no greater than six point seven feet. And then inlets twenty-five, twenty-eight, and twenty-nine have a spread no greater than eight point three feet and cannot be reduced because of off-site stormwater flow. So any event that a variance were to be granted and you do have spreads around eight point three feet, what might happen? What concerns might there be?
So in the case where it's in the cul-de-sac, cul-de-sac, the roadway is actually wider there, so it wouldn't necessarily on both sides inundate the whole cul-de-sac or even obstruct the whole road. Uh, in the case of the ones that are eight point three, it gets a little bit closer to that. And part of that reason is the run-on coming into the site from the street, uh, as you see on Aidenborough coming in. So the water's flowing in from Aidenborough. If I can get it, I'll, I'll do it up there. So it comes in from here that way. And so you get more spread here and less spread and less spread, so it's, it's processing the water coming from the upstream side. So the, there is still more than a twelve-foot lane between the inlets on both sides there. You can't really see, where twenty-eight and thirty-one are, but the lane, the, the width of the road is right at, what, thirty feet? I think it's twenty-four lane width plus another foot and a half for gutter. Right. So by going eight feet on one side and not on, and, and I think it's four feet on the other side, you still maintain the lane, a lane width through the middle, but it, it does in fact go beyond what's in the standard. So that's the reason for the request for the variance.
So it sounds like what I'm hearing from you as a professional engineer, is this something you would feel comfortable with, or is this something that we would exercise caution against?
I mean, anytime you've got... I would feel, I would feel okay with it, um, because of the fact that it's run on, but it's not to the point where it would, it would create a condition where you can't access the subdivision.
Good.
So I, I have two questions. First off, first one would be, is there an alternative to just allowing the water to have to do it, we're asking it to do right now? Is there any sort of alternative solution?
Alternative would be to increase the capacity of the stormwater. Provide more, more capacity in the system. That's certainly something that could, in my opinion, be done to mitigate it, maybe. There are more details in the design that I haven't seen or gotten into to know that increasing it to a forty-inch inlet would, would take it down to five feet. I haven't done those calculations, but, um, it would seem reasonable that 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 could be explored at least to see if it could be reduced.
Mr. Jenkins, if I may also offer, part of the concerns we've had with, with this request, I'm, I'm no engineer and, and gone through this process, but having reviewed it as we did today, our concern with this is if, if we go specifically above the six feet as we have and reduce that lane usage, obviously ponding becomes an issue, and whether if it freezes or some other thing becomes an issue. And absent of that, uh, at some point, the city's going to own this. So if we were to be in this and we knew in advance that there could be the potential for ponding or some other, uh, negative consequence, then ultimately the city may be the one to remedy that rather than, rather than developer. So we're, our, our suggestion early on was to, um, or our conversations earlier upon reviewing this was to deny or, or suggest to, that this be denied. Now, if the board or the planning commission chooses to ask for some additional information, I, I certainly think that would be reasonable. But as written, absent of that information, from the city management standpoint, the suggestion would be to deny that, that specific request.
If I may, I'm Jeremy Moody with Site Engineering Consultants. I'm the design engineer responsible for this plan. I guess a little bit of background, so, um, where possible, I've tried to reduce the amount of spread in the water ponding as much as I can. In the curb, in the cul-de-sac radiuses, those spreads are six point two two without adding another inlet. I feel that those are comfortable enough, seeing as how we have a forty foot, forty-three foot radius in those cul-de-sacs. The only problem area that we have is at the beginning, uh, entrance to Aidenborough. Um, and I've tried to minimize the spread as much as physically possible with our current layout. But due to the amount of off-site stormwater that's coming down that existing roadway, it's physically impossible for me to add any more inlets to our roadway to get the spread down below six feet because of the amount of water that's coming off of that existing subdivision. The worst-case scenario would be the SAG point, which you indicated too, and the spread on those two inlets are six point two two. So the inlets above... So the inlets above upstream of that sag point is the inlets on slope, and that's the ones that are eight feet. And I've had, added four inlets to the existing or to the proposed roadway in order to collect as much water as I could. I can't physically add anymore to our subdivision. So the only solution that we have is to add inlets to the existing subdivision in order to fix this issue.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
Abstant of being an engineer, if we're talking about Aidenborough Drive?
Yes.
I believe is where we're talking, and obviously, that, that's Phase One of Aiden Woods as we're, as we know it. Would there be an opportunity, um, to install additional storm drains on Aidenborough outside of the footprint of?
Outside of our property?
Phase two, yes.
Uh, I mean, so the original subdivision was designed and installed per the design guidelines at that time. So, but now we're held to a new standard, and we can only do what we can with our section. Uh, I mean, without adding inlets and ripping up the existing roadway in front of the two existing homes at the end of that drive, um, that's the only solution in order to reduce the spread.
I understand.
Um, so, in my eyes, that's a city's issue and not our developer's issue to our section.
Right. In my eyes, it's going to become a city issue.
Yeah. I mean, it is a city issue currently.
So, current and future. So that's where I'm just trying to explore the, the question.
Is this something that we could also, like, table and hold over potentially for more information or solutions versus voting on it and then, you know, putting a negative or positive?
You, you can't, the Board have, has, the Planning Commission has the privilege to do that if it so chooses.
Can you increase the size, like we discussed earlier, downstream?
So in, increasing the size of the curb, we can absolutely do that. We can change those, those inlet types. But with the, the type of curb that is required in the city of Fairview, there's only one of two options, and they basically roughly have the same dimensions. Um, it's going to be very, a very minor change. I mean, we can look at other options, but it's just going to be a very minor change. It's not going to change it two feet of spread that we're required to.
Yeah, whenever we start talking about stormwater runoff, and I'm thinking worst-case scenarios, I'm thinking possibly flooding into people's homes, stuff like that.
Yeah, absolutely.
So I would rather be safe than sorry. The last thing I want to do is sit here and say, "Yeah, absolutely, go ahead, because you'll probably be fine, and you don't think you can do anything else." And then later on, five years from now, somebody's home gets flooded or something like that because of this. That would be on my head, and I wouldn't like that.
No, absolutely.
So I don't feel comfortable passing it as it is with that variance.
I mean, looking at it as far as an engineer, I wouldn't have designed it if I wasn't comfortable with it. Let's put it that way.
I hear you.
So, the inlets that are the worst-case scenario, which is they put a spread, are inlets on slope, so the water's going to bypass those inlets regardless. And then they're all going to go to the sag point on Aidenborough in our proposed subdivision. And I've, I've been able to reduce that ponding and reduce it down to 6.2, which is right at the design standard. And even at that ponding or that spread width, we still have a 14-foot lane width within the road, uh, for a vehicle to pass by. So we're talking tenths here versus, uh, a few feet or, you know, a foot of rise over the curb line. So we're talking tenths on the spread versus what the actual issue is, which is the amount of water coming off of that existing roadway.
So our standard is six feet?
Yes.
And you've gotten it down to 6.2?
In the, in the worst case, the worst scenario on that road, yes, the sag point, I've got it down to 6.22. Which is where the water's actually going to pond, go and sit and wait for it to actually go down.
In low spot, it's 6.2, but at the entrance, it's 8.3.
Yeah.
And so you're saying there's nothing else you can do?
Now, if you pull up the picture on the other, other roadway, so our property line starts at the existing roadway. So, due to the road grade of the, of the existing subdivision, um, we had to match the roadway slope in order to tie in our section and then transition the road grade back up because of the amount of hills and, um, in our section. So we had to put a low spot, which on the previously approved plans, there was still a low spot designed at this point in the road. Uh, but it was designed to a different design standard and a different stormwater standard than what the current standards are. So, with that low point being where it is, in between that low point and where our property is at the Aidenborough Drive, we're installing four additional units upstream of the sag point. And there's no room in between that sag point to install anymore on our property. So the only other solution would be to add additional inlets to the existing section on the existing road and tear up the existing road in order to, to reduce that spread in the worst-case scenario, two tenths.
And Kevin, you were saying the six-foot spread is based on a road how wide?
Well, the six-foot spread is, that's in there, is assuming, I guess, a 24-foot road, and that's why it's set. Other municipalities, you use half a lane width.
Okay. So the eight-foot section, the section that has the eight-foot spread is how wide currently?
It would take more than half of the lane width.
Well, you're still encountering the curb and there, or the gutter is there. So the gutter is also a foot and a half.
But the road there is how wide?
24-foot wide for the lane width.
Okay.
Then you have a foot and a half for the gutter, which that six foot is including that gutter width as well. So if you have eight foot and eight foot, 16, you got 27, so you got nearly 11 feet or... 27, 18, yeah. Nearly 10 feet for a lane in the center of the road for a vehicle to pass by.
Is there no opportunity to widen the road or make a deeper curb or something to help for those two feet?
That would be a design decision, I guess. But I will say that the distance between the nearest next driveway in the previous section is right at 100 feet. So there's some, there is some room there. It's not, like, the driveway's not right at the lane, at the phase line, so...
Is, is this eight foot, eight-plus feet of spread in the beginning of, in the entrance only taking place during this 25-year storm?
Yes.
So what does it look like on a typical?
I mean, on a daily storm...
How big's the spread on, like, you know, not 25-year, let's talk five-year storms? Like, what's the spread?
Yeah, on a daily storm event, I, I did not run the numbers, because we're held to the 25-year storm event, but I would probably say they're significantly lower. The 25-year is a higher storm event. Uh, I'd probably say they're, it's probably in the fives, maybe, maybe five and a halves. I mean, it's significantly lower.
Not that I feel we could base our decision off of that, but if peace of mind, I would feel better knowing if we were talking about fractions of a foot, but knowing in, in reality, most of the time, this isn't going to be an issue. But if you're getting seven feet of spread on an average rain, then, then we're talking a different story, I think.
Yeah. I guess, put it to reference, so the two, two inlets that are over eight foot, if you look at the property line, those inlets are on the property line. That, that is exactly where we're tying into the existing subdivision at. Those inlets are on the property line, and they're eight foot of spread. That's the, they're only accepting the existing stormwater coming off of the existing subdivision.
By the time you get to the ones past the corner, you're already back towards the six?
What was that?
You're back towards six.
Yes.
Okay.
Once you get to the bottom of the curb, yeah.
Mr. Collins, I know that this is, would totally be some random number, but if we have to go in and install some sort of storm drain in the current subdivision, what's the projected cost of that?
I, I, I do not know.
Major? Would it make me tremble to hear it?
I, I, I do not know. I don't know, um, utilities, infrastructure, underground, sub, subterranean, I mean, there, I just don't have a way to accurately answer that question or give it a range, I'm sorry.
To your point, Phase One was built under different standards. What I love about the city, especially in the last four years, is that we're always improving, and we're raising our standards. Phase two, this right here, it's going to be held to a higher standard. It is being held to a higher standard right now. And I believe that that's acceptable, and that's representative of where we're going as a city. So, for me, I would like to make a negative recommendation to the Board of Commissioners for this particular item.
You're making a motion for?
Correct.
A negative approval of Item Three, or a negative approval of the variance?
No, for Item Three.
Item Three, okay. There's a motion, is there a second? Motion will die for lack of a second. Okay. So Jenkins? Callie? Additional discussion? Anyone have any questions or additional discussion?
So just so I understand, we're denying three, not just the variance?
Correct. The motion is to deny Item Three.
You can't accept the plans as it sits without denying that variance. The variance is core to the plans.
If I make one more comment?
Yes, sir.
Um, to, to answer your comment, yes, th, this section is definitely held to a higher standard underneath the new guidelines. I completely get that. We, we've tried the best that we can in order to adhere to those guidelines. But sometimes there's a gray area in between adhering to the new design guidelines and then also accepting what was designed in the past in the previous sections and trying to merge those. And I feel like, in, in this section specifically, we've done our best, but there, there are some things out of our control. We can't go installing inlets in an existing subdivision and tearing up the city's roadway. That's outside of our property with a condition that's already there. So, we've done our best, but now we have to kind of, like, accept what's there and, and, and move forward. That's the way I feel.
Maybe you sit down with the irons, and then maybe you guys can actually figure out something that would work.
I mean, I already know what would work. We can add two inlets upstream in the existing subdivision. But that's not our property, it's the city's property.
Maybe something, you guys can figure out something on your own property, though.
Yeah.
Let me, let me, as, as a pro, I don't, I don't speak for the city or the Board of Commissioners, but I don't think the Board of Commissioners would be opposed to engaging in an agreement. Ultimately, I mean, it, in all, in all honesty, this subdivision's already plotted. So, the, whatever takes place in the existing right-of-way is still the city's right-of-way. So, I think in that, in the interest of, of just caution, um, I believe the city would entertain a discussion about installing storm drain inlet upstream if it were to assist alleviating the problem.
Yeah, we'd be willing to do that if we are able to get some, I guess, uh, feedback from the city with, you know, paying for those improvements, essentially.
As far as the city paying for those improvements?
Yeah, for the, just the inlets that are going in the existing subdivision.
Yeah, I don't, um, I don't know that I can commit to the city to that. That's obviously another discussion, we have no clue what this costs or, or any other thing. So, um, I, I don't think there's an interest on staff's side to not have the subdivision proceed. And I have this motion, a second on the floor for that, and I, I respect that. The, um, our simple discussion was concerned about the storm drain. So, I think outside of that, if the subdivision were, or this item were to pass, e, even if Item One was, um, was not a part of that passage, if this, if this item passed without the waiver, I think the city obviously would be agreeable to go back and speak on the unit of developer and whoever else to find a solution, uh, to assist you with that, with that thing. There, there's no effort not to have the subdivision pass, we're just concerned about that.
Yeah, we would want to work with staff on that.
Mr. Collins, procedurally speaking, at this point, if the Planning Commission were to make a negative recommendation to the Board of Commissioners, the item would still go to the Board of Commissioners for a vote, correct? Just with an, an unfavorable recommendation?
It can, if the, if the petitioner requests that it do so.
Okay.
But this is a site plan, it wouldn't be going to the Board of Commissioners.
Well, you're correct, I apologize.
Okay, cool, thank you. So if we were to vote?
This wouldn't go to the Board.
With a disapproval, it would not go to the Board of Commissioners?
It doesn't go to the Board either way.
Oh, it doesn't go either way, this is us, it starts and ends with us.
Yeah, this is just a site plan, the zoning is in place, this is just a site plan for approval here.
Bring him out.
Okay.
But in what you're saying, you're saying we could approve it without this variance?
Yeah, you could make a...
Absolutely, yes. Yes, there's motion on the floor to deny Item Three in its entirety. So if that were to pass, then Item Three would be disposed of. If Item Three failed or the motion was removed, and Item Three were passed, uh, with the exception of variance number one, then that still leaves the, the flooding issue that, that still exists. And at that point, the city staff and I would meet with the developer, the engineer, whoever else, to see if there would be some alternate resolution for that. If in, if in the event there is no alternate resolution, we'd simply bring that item back to you for discussion. That's, again, our effort is not to not have the subdivision phase completed. Our effort is to seek whatever remedy there may be available to prevent that small area flooding.
And that would be the more ideal motion versus tabling it for a month to explore other options?
The motion currently is to deny?
I, I'm willing to amend my motion, absolutely, like...
Will you, do you want to remove your second?
Well, I'll amend mine with him.
Okay. Yeah, so I'll take my motion off the table, I'll take my motion off the table.
So, 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 Mr. Jenkins, just procedurally, so you've withdrawn your motion?
I've withdrawn my motion, yes.
So at this point, there's no motion?
Correct.
Being considered?
So, if we make a positive recommendation with the exception of the variance, we deny the variance, but we make a positive recommendation, we approve the site plan. Um, the plans need to get updated, they need to be changed, right?
Yes.
Yeah, they would, they would need to be changed. So then they'd have to come back before us again for reapproval, correct?
If it's an off-site improvement, the plan wouldn't necessarily have to change.
Correct.
It would be, it would be no different than if it's a off-site traffic improvement.
Okay.
At this point, if, if this item, if there was a motion and a second, and Item Three passes, with the exception of variance number one?
Okay.
Then there's no variance and the drainage requirement remains.
Wonderful, okay.
At, at that point, then the city would engage in an alternate agreement with the developer to do roadwork improvements in some form on existing city right-of-way outside of the purview of the Planning Commission.
Cool.
Effectively, there'd be an agreement between the city, if that required BOC to ratify that agreement, then that's what would take place.
Wonderful, thank you.
And those calculations for whatever gets done there would then carry itself into this. So it would just be a, it would be no different than some of the other, um, comments that we've had before, where there's a little cleanup here and there, but it's not changing the requirements.
Thank you, guys. So, is there a motion?
Motion to approve with the exception of three and one?
I'd like to make sure that we approve number, item number three, and omit their, uh, variance request on staff comments one.
So Anderson, motion for approval, striking the variance request on Item One, the second with Callie. Any additional discussion or questions? Ms. Johnson?
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Callie?
Aye.
Ms. Rainey?
Aye.
Mr. Jenkins?
Aye.
Mr. McDonald?
Aye.
Ms. Schulist?
Aye.
Ms. Senyard?
Aye.
Mr. Butler?
Aye.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jeremy. Item Four, PC Resolution 1621, rezoning Fairview Terrace, map 46, parcel 16 and 16.04. Current zoning RS 40, proposed zoning R 20, 48.05 acres. Property owners, Brandon Robertson. Action by the Planning Commission for a positive or a negative recommendation. All right, sir, could you state your name for me?
Good evening, Rob Moulton of SCC, um, here in behalf of Mr. Robert, Brandon Robertson. Um, I think some of you remember I was here last year this time in regards to this property and regards to rezoning this to RS 15 with the negative recommendation from the Planning Commission, um, because it didn't meet the land use map at that point in time. So we were coming back to ask for an acceptable, uh, vote in regards to rezoning the remaining portion of this property on this side of the creek to RS 20 to be in compliance, or actually compatible with the one parcel that's already zoned, R 20 on that side of the creek, and giving a connection back to Crow Cut Road on that side. So, more or less, we're just asking for the other two parcels that my, my client owns to be zoned the same as the one parcel that was zoned back in 2006 as part of the overall, I guess, if you want to call it a master plan, that was kind of in the works back in 2006 before the recession kicked in on that side. So that's, that's the request we're asking for tonight.
Thank you, sir.
So to be clear, um, the RS 20 designation does align with our current land use map, correct? The requested RS 20 does align with our current land use map.
I believe it does, yes.
Cool.
And the adjacent existing community is RS 20 as well?
Correct. That is correct.
Okay.
This will be an extension of Castleberry, you have a new name, is it a different section? Is it going to be like type homes or?
Yeah, we just, we just decided, you know, there's Castle, you know, Castleberry, there's Aiden Woods of Castleberry, we just felt that, you know, we're going across the creek with another development coming off of Crow Cut, that it was time to substantiate a different name so that it's not all associated with one another on that side. But the zoning and the lot sizes are all the same based on the zoning, so...
Is this on a step system, is that the plan?
No, we've actually been, over the past years, one of our working sessions on that side, I'm working with Michael Rogers at Dixon, um, we, he's actually been done, spent a lot of time over the last year trying to figure out what we can do. And recently, in the last month and a half, they've done a lot of evaluations of the existing sewer system out on this side of town and the pump stations that are out there that they... and the pump stations that are out there, that they have actually found capacity for this property to be zoned R20 and still be on sewer, not on step.
It's going to be a straight R20 zoning?
Yes. Yeah, so all three parcels, so you see on the map there, the yellow parcel's already been R20. That was zoned back when Aiden Woods on the other side of the creek was zoned back in the early mid 200, around 2005 with the original portion of what we've talked about previously in the previous agenda item on that side. That was all more or less kind of a master plan, kind of back in 2005, 2006, that is when the recession kicked in, this portion of the creek, you know, the side of the creek more or less just fell into no man's land for a period of time until we're here we are today. But that yellow portion was zoned R20 way back in 2006. We're just asking for the continuation of the properties that my client owns to be zoned R20 to be compatible with the rest of the property.
Any additional questions? And so just to confirm procedurally, if this is approved or denied, it would go to the board. Um, it would have two readings if it went through the process. And then if it was, if it was approved, it would have to come back with construction plans. It would have then have some kind of traffic study or review of the impact that it's going to make there and not necessarily at this step or process, correct? Is there any additional questions or anyone like to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion for a positive recommendation to the Board of Commissioners for rezoning to R20 from RS40.
I'll second.
Jenkins, Senor, motion for approval. Is there any additional discussion or questions?
Yeah, with that being said, um, we have had, I have personally had no less than two different residents who live nearby emailing me about this, um, with their opinions on how the property would clash with the rural nature of the adjacent properties. That is something that is irrelevant to our discussion here at the planning commission level. So if you are a citizen and you are concerned about that, that's something to show up to the Board of Commissioners meeting about, talk with them, leave citizen comments, things like that. Um, but for our purposes here, um, the RS20 designation does meet our land use map.
Sir, any additional questions? Ms. Johnson?
Mr. Jenkins?
Aye.
Ms. Senyard?
Aye.
Ms. Schulist?
Aye.
Mr. McDonald?
Aye.
Mr. Cali? Ms. Rainey?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Butler?
Aye.
Thank you all.
Thank you, sir. Reports for discussion information, City Planning Staff and City Engineer, Mr. Blackburn.
Nothing tonight, sir.
Thank you, sir. City Manager, Ms. Collins?
No, sir, nothing. I said thank you for your time for the work session and thank you for the next 90 days.
Thank you, sir. City Attorney, Mr. Potter. Thank you, sir. We'll move to communication from the planning commission members. Mr. McDonald?
I have nothing tonight. Thank you.
Mr. Jenkins?
Yes, uh, what would the uh, process look like to get the design review manual adjusted to reflect um, the the new possible fence height from six feet to four feet and landscape buffers and all that kind of stuff?
The, Mr. Jenkins, the designer review manual is um, obviously um, employed by the planning commission, and then that is adopted by ordinance at the BOC. So we would have to go through the process of simply amending that and at this level and then recommending that to the BOC, which would require two readings of the BOC. Um, I would, I would caution the board as we talk about having that discussion. Um, from time to time, there there are variances and questions that come about that may or may not require a wholesale change for that thing. I will tell you that fencing um, in all of its forms becomes very problematic with um, how you discuss those things. Uh, we heard very various questions and concerns tonight, you know, is a is a six-foot fence a safety issue? Is it not a safety issue? Is a four-foot fence not? Is it? Um, I will tell you, my experience has been the type and material of the fence is far more important than the height of the fence. Um, there's some, there's some thought that a six-foot fence, that's a privacy fence, if there's something, a hazard behind that fence, the there's some school of thought that if a child or someone who would be enticed to that hazard can't see it, then it's not a hazard. There's also discussion that if a child happens to get in there, then no one can see through that fence. So there are discussions both ways. So um, somewhere in the middle typically is the type and design of fencing so that you're able to secure what you're attempting to secure without making it enticement to someone who could get injured or without hiding that person from view. So um, in in that vein, I think the discussion of fencing as it relates to all fencing, not just what we talked about tonight, but we're talking about around a detention pond, a roadway, any other thing. All of the variations of uses of fence would need to be discussed rather than engaging simply in what would need to be amended based on the issuance of a variance. Uh, that's, fencing is, much like sidewalks, those are, those are delicate conversations to have.
So do we go about how having those conversations or is it just so complex that it could go either way that we're like, hey, just let it be and keep having variances periodically?
Listen, there's no harm in having the conversation.
Okay.
Um, and I'm one of those people where if you're continually issuing the same variance time after time after time after time, then obviously that that item needs to be amended. If you have a one-off or something that garners more discussion, it may not be that you need to change the height of the fence, but it could be the construction design, location of openings, all sorts of those things. So I would encourage us to have the discussion, see where those things fall, gather some information, and make sure we're making the the proper um, consideration for for all types and variants.
Thank you.
Considerations, yes, sir.
And thank you for leading that workshop this morning, or it felt like this morning. Yeah, I feel like we're making good progress, so.
I I don't, obviously, things get done in the community where things are invisible to the community. But if you look at what we're doing at the staff level, what the Board of Commissioners is doing, what the planning commission is doing, you know, for you guys to show up two hours early, to have these discussions, to commit to the others. Um, these aren't exercises that we're doing simply for showing up two hours early. We're trying to affect a plan so that this community will see the benefits of this work 10, 15, 20 years from now, and that effort sincere. So when the public sees these meetings and they attend these meetings or hear things are going on, um, criticism comes easy. It it is what it is. We we're all grown. We expect that. Um, but the results of this work will far outlast any criticism that we may garner um, through the process, and I appreciate all of your effort in in working through this, so.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Senor?
None for me.
Schulist?
Um, thank you again, Mr. Collins, for leading that this evening. Can you remind us again what are the next steps for that?
Yes, so, um, as we sit here tonight, we have preliminarily um, scheduled a similar work session for the April Planning Commission meeting. My hope is that we can have um, a work session in between. Uh, we talked about doing that via Zoom or some other thing, so we can talk through again the presentation that we had tonight. Assuming that we can have that and we get through the planning commission discussion, my my hope would be that we could have the zoning classifications on the April Planning Commission agenda. If we can get those zoning classifications on there, then we can move forward at the BOC level. That will require first reading, public hearing, and second reading, and obviously there's some work done. But as soon as we get those zoning classifications adopted, we can then move forward with with inserting those on a on a land use map. My hope is, if we could do that work, we could have a land use map adopted no later than the second meeting in July. I think that's a reasonable expectation for time. If we can have that done, we can move forward with the remainder of the comprehensive plan. And my hope would be that we could have that comprehensive plan in its entirety presented to the Board of Commissioners at the first meeting in January of 2022. Um, for for those of you who've been involved in this work and you you've you've seen how this goes, that is an incredibly compressed timeline, um, but it's one we think is workable and be beneficial to us, so.
Okay, that's all for me.
Mr. Cali?
Nothing tonight.
Mayor Rainey?
Nothing tonight. Thank you, sir.
Anderson?
Nothing tonight.
I just want a second. Thank you for putting that workshop together. Some tremendous discussion, some tremendous progress. Tremendous discussion during the the meeting tonight. Um, and I thank all of you guys for your time and commitment. I'll entertain a much adjourned.
Motion adjourned.
So move.